Meeting, it's Wednesday, September 4th. We're in the skate room at Orleans Town Hall. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and start with public comment. Does anybody have any comments or anybody online?
No hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes from the August 7th meeting.
We have a couple of comments on the minutes.
Sure.
Um, when, is there a date that corrections need to be sent by Darcy?
I mean, I'm flexible, but there probably just needs to be enough time so that I can submit them to the director and then they can make it here to the next meeting, so.
I, I know I, maybe when you send them out, you need to send, maybe please have your comments to me by September 12th.
I could give a deadline.
I mean, I thought I returned mine to you in time, but they didn't get in and I feel a couple of mine should be in minutes.
They should have been in. I did.
One was, I thought last time, maybe my memory is going, but we had like, almost like a 10-minute discussion on the block party. I mean, I know it doesn't all have to be in, but it wasn't mentioned, I don't think, in these minutes.
I looked toward two and didn't see it.
But you didn't send a comment in about it?
No.
Okay. So, I thought that was one thing, that it should be in there somewhere, that we decided to do the block party. And then the other thing was, when Joan was talking about this event on Columbus Day weekend, one of the statements says, "It will be at the Village Green and would like Snow Library to fundraise." I don't think that was ever true. I, I think they wanted us to participate.
No, they did want us to fundraise.
They wanted us to fundraise?
For the library.
Oh, then I didn't hear it correctly.
Initially.
Yeah, initially, but we told them we're not ready to start fundraising.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so she was correct, yep.
But, but it doesn't say in here that we decided we wouldn't, or, you know. Okay.
So, did you get her changes?
Okay.
I did, and I did think I put them in because I did submit edits.
Okay.
But, um.
All right, well, then I was wrong with one, but I felt that the other one should be in. Okay.
The block party piece?
Yes.
Maybe, um, specific wording could be given if you really want a statement, like, would you please put this, like, sometimes Joan would put in a specific statement for me to add, rather than suggesting that I mention something kind of more vaguely, a specific statement that I could insert would be helpful. I did it on the, I did exactly what she didn't want, so like she's, Darcy said, "Don't make changes in the document." I just went in and highlighted it and said, "This is what I'd put here."
Oh, okay.
And it just made it easier than saying like, "Page 2, paragraph 4."
Okay.
And, and also then saying, "Could you mention something?" Because then, it would be, "Could you say this exact thing?" And then I can put it right in there, exactly word for word.
Okay.
That would be helpful, if that's.
Okay.
Do you wanna hold off approving the minutes?
No, I think if, maybe thought, which was somehow that's, do it with those additions.
Additions, okay.
Then I see nothing wrong.
Motion to approve from anybody?
Motion to approve, second.
And all in favor?
All right.
All right. One, two, three.
Sorry, it's one edit then you wanna see, because the other one.
Block party, yeah.
So, we've got a 6-0 in the minutes. Okay, so, moving on to the trustee chair report, I've got just a couple of items I wanted to mention. In reading the stuff that I'm sure all of you have seen as well, good news from the state relative to their money for state funds to libraries this year, they got a 13% increase. So, according to Tavi, we're $15,697, so we could potentially go up to $17,737 if that follows all the way through. I know it's not a huge sum of money, but it's nice to see in the first year of Governor Healey that she's offering strong support for libraries.
Um, excuse me, may I ask, then, what's this?
I'm gonna bring that up next.
But that's separate.
Yeah, yeah.
That's separate. We already have the fund, what you just talked about.
Right, I'm gonna bring that up, it's a different, a different line.
This is something different.
State aid to libraries.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the second piece to talk about is, that's Snow Library Capital Campaign, it's the Capitol Board, sorry. Our first meeting has now been set for September 24th. So, that includes two representatives from the Friends, two representatives from the trustees, and then an independent person, then I, who's Ben Wiegand from Cape Cod 5. So, we're looking forward to holding our first meeting. I don't think that there's gonna be considerable action, but I feel like we're all in agreement that it's good to have this group meet for the first time and discuss what their goals are, start work in the right direction. Anybody have any comments or questions about either of those two things?
Yeah, tell me exactly what you said. This was the, the support?
No, I'm not there yet.
You're not there yet.
I'm still on the chair report, yeah.
The chair, okay. That makes more sense.
It's going to be Sue and I. So, it's the treasurer and then the chair.
Jamie, just for some clarity, that was the memorandum of understanding that Mike Ford signed, and it's the chair and the treasurer of Friends, chair and treasurer of the trustees, and one outside person who can't be on the board. So, that has been approved, it's filed with the town, and it's all in writing. And then George, was it Malloy? We worked with him and he was all for getting that done that way also.
And I'll send that back out to everybody so you can reread that memorandum, because it's, it's helpful.
Please.
Okay, so the next item on your agenda is support for state library construction program. So, a couple of times, actually multiple times, the MBLC has gone out and said, "Looking for support for the economic development bill that was put together last year." And I wanted to see what the trustees wanted to do relative to that. So, essentially, it's a very large, 10-year type bill. The governor created their own version of it. This is language from the House version, then the Senate had their version, they went to conference committee to try and resolve their differences, and they could not resolve them in the late spring, early summer. There was rumors that they were gonna start working on it again sometime soon, 'cause they've finished a couple of conference committees in the last week. So, the question to the trustees is, is this something that you would like the trustees to weigh in on and say, "We support it," and send out a couple of letters in support? Or are we not in that sort of position? What do you think about the idea? I did send a message to Andrea from the MBLC, asking for some extra details, and she's gonna be out for quite a bit. Busy.
When I used to go to lobby at the State House for library money, the, pretty much the response I got from all the office people was, "It's a numbers game." So, really, I think it would be best if we all wrote our own letter, because then there would be more letters in support of this.
I agree. Write your own.
Rather than the trustees.
Yeah, the APCC just said, you know, there's this whole thing that the Association Preserved Cape Cod wanted people to write letters against machine gun range, and there was like 1,600 letters written, and they swear that helped put this over the edge. And the Audubon just did this whole thing on the horseshoe crabs, and they got like 5,000 letters, first time ever. And they said, "It's a numbers, it's a numbers game."
And they count, actually, they count the letters higher than the emails, is the other thing I got.
Printed letters.
The office, interestingly enough. I mean, they're counting both of them, but they figure the letters have more weight because people have made more of an effort.
Hmm.
That's what they said a few years ago. They may have changed now, but that's all.
Yeah, we all just did emails, so. So, Jamie, if you tell us who to email and what the message?
Okay, yeah.
And we could send it out to our patrons, we'll put it on our website to say, you know, "Here's what you have to do," and you could just click and it gets sent.
We could?
On our website, yep.
Whose website?
The library's website.
We can't lobby on the library's website.
Oh, well, then we can't do that.
It's, it's not legal to lobby on the library's website.
So, is it legal to say, "This is what we need your help to support"?
It would be better if the Friends did it. It's, it's, we are a government agency and we're not supposed to lobby. We are a government-supported, government agency, and there are rules about that.
Well, okay, that's good, you know, we probably should do this.
Trustee.
As individuals.
But the Friends, because they are a 501(c)(3), they can put it on their website.
Okay.
Let me do a little bit more research to see exactly where it's going, and then I can, I can send something out.
I just got a thing in the, I just got an email from MBLC in the last two days that said they were still looking for support for this.
Yeah.
For what?
For this.
For this. Okay. So, if, if we don't get this, does that mean there's no funding?
No, no, this is.
Future.
This is future funding.
Future.
And it's unclear as to whether this 150 is the 10, a 10-year period, whether it's a three-year period, there's no, there's nothing I've seen that explains that.
Okay.
But they're, I think that they're in the last of three years right now, is that right, Joan?
I don't remember.
The funding cycle that we're applying to?
Yes.
So, so they really, so they really need this for next year.
To continue on, right.
Yeah. Whereas before, they didn't have money for a couple of years.
All right.
Okay. Sue, turning it over to you for the financial report?
I've looked over the financial report and everything just seems to be like on schedule. I don't see anything unusual. I think everything is the way it should be. I don't know if Tavi agrees?
Yes, everything, everything is on target. Some of the numbers that you see in the red are just caused because of timing issues. So, we submit some invoices earlier, and so the percentage that we use goes down, not commensurate with what you would think from the, you know, the budget trip point for the month. But then that equals out, so we're, we're fine.
Yes.
Is it still the case that we can't, don't have access to the information about the trust funds?
I haven't ever looked into it, but it says the July and August interest hasn't been posted yet. I mean, I.
Yeah, this, I mean, we're, we're not getting any reports on the.
Yeah.
From the towns, the towns managing.
All right. Okay. Any other questions about financial report?
Well, I have a question. Do you, someone wants Sue to ask the town for those reports, 'cause maybe someone just needs to ask, I'm not sure.
This was something that Deirdre would always talk about, and there is, of course, a transition that's gone on.
Now, yeah.
But we're now far enough along that I feel like we should be able to.
Asking again.
Yeah, I think you can ask the finance person.
I'll talk to Tavi and I'll find out who I need to contact and let them know that I'm now the treasurer in.
That's a good point, too.
Okay.
You're pulling the levers.
Well, we, we're probably, we're probably gonna have to run the reports ourselves. They're, they're not sending us the reports through Munis anymore, the finance office. So, whenever you want the reports, I guess in time for the meeting, Teresa and I will have to run them.
How on earth is that?
Well, we just learned how to do it a little while ago, but we have the instructions to do it, so.
Well, I mean, I don't know if they should be maybe run every quarter, something like that. I mean, maybe we don't need them every month, we don't really use the money, but, okay, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay. And, and then you can let me know what format you want them in.
I don't even know what they look like.
You know what, you know what, maybe it's a good idea if we run them and I show you what they look like.
That would be perfect.
Because the first time you look at the actual Munis reports, they, they don't, they don't look like this. Like, you know, for example, Teresa.
Nice and neat.
Puts all of that in the columns and stuff. I mean, these are, they're, they're, they're columnar, but it's you, there's a knack to reading them, like what you're, what you're seeing, so.
Okay.
And, and our next meeting will, the first quarter will have ended, so it'll, it's a good time to actually have that.
I'm sorry to give you more to do, Tavi.
No, it's fine. Well, we, we have to run, we have to run them anyway.
Okay.
Like the monthly, we have to run the monthly budget summary so that we know where we are. So, like, that's, that's where these numbers come from.
Okay.
These all come from Munis report, and what happens is Teresa takes all of these numbers from the report and looks at our internal controls at the library just to make sure there's no discrepancies. So, we have to run that report anyway. The trust funds is just like another, another facet of it.
Okay.
Okay, moving along. Tavi, can you give us a, can you talk a little bit about the MBLC site visit?
Sure, I'm just gonna give Lindsay this handout and everything. So, we had a very good visit on August the 13th, and essentially, the, the two people from the MBLC who came, Andrea Bono Bunker and Heather Bachman, along with the construction professional, basically wanted me to lead them on a tour and show them all of the areas. And they weren't, they just wanted to take in all the information and then use that as a determination. So, what I did is, we started, we started just on the outside, took a look around, walked around, and then we went inside and we went down to the lower level. And, you know, I mentioned the book stacks were filled to capacity, which is one thing they can see down there, the fiction is, is very tight. Only one small, quiet study room with a door, and they asked me, and you would like more of those, I said, "Yes," because they're in demand. And, you know, fortunately, there was somebody in there who had booked the room, and it does get used quite frequently, because it, as I mentioned to them, it's the only room in the library that you can zoom or do anything with electronics and not have that tension of worrying that you're disturbing someone or somebody, somebody's disturbing you. The next thing I pointed out, which of course was no egress from the lower level, and they could see that, we pointed that out. I kind of let, and Ron was the one who kind of jumped in when we were talking about the fire suppression system, because they started talking in more technical terms about, you know, you can see that from the height of the stacks, in order to put any kind of system like that in, you'd have to raise the whole ceiling. And so, that would be a, a major project, which, you know, of course, they saw. And then the other thing that I mentioned, and then Ron kind of gave them the details about it, is the fact that the water coming into the building, the main water supply coming into the building, is in through the staff break room area, and it's a 1-inch diameter pipe. And of course, the minute Ron said that, the construction professional, they agreed that, you know, that's totally not sufficient for a fire suppression system or fire sprinkler system, so that's another thing that would have to be done. So, I mean, right there, you know, that, that was an issue. Then we went up to the main floor, and interestingly, I, I mean, we kind of all came to the conclusion at the same time that because of the library's openness, there is no acoustic separation. And they could see that, and you know, the fact that you walk in, you see the children's area, and you see the reading room right next to it. And again, it was, it was noisy, so they could hear all of that. And so, we went into the children's area, and actually, one of the first comments they made, I said, "Well, you see, you know, we're utilizing it as best as we can, but pretty much it's maxed out." And since Kim has started, she's ordered a lot of materials, she's ordered some additional furniture for the room. So, they saw that essentially, the library has done about what it can with the area, and that we're pretty much at our limits, so that we really can't do any more programming, we really can't do any more collection. I mean, if you, if you look in there now, I mean, we pretty much have it filled to capacity. If we filled it anymore with things, there wouldn't be any room for the children who come in there. So, they noticed that. So, it's a severe space shortage. And then we talked about programming, and I mentioned to them that, and took them into the, the crane room, where that's our, really our only program room. It's the only room that has any kind of technology, so you can do a PowerPoint presentation, or you can show a, a movie. And then I took them into the Cape Cod room, which is a beautiful room, but again, you know, you can't use technology in there, there isn't a door, so, because there's collection in there, so they can't, there can't be. But again, you know, that's a, that's an area that's good for a meeting, but when we have meetings, you can hear all the sound come right out. And then finally, we went on to the, to the mezzanine. And again, I pointed out, we have at least three separate collections up there that really don't kind of belong together, but we did it because of space. And I also mentioned to them too, that the, we were told by an engineer that the point load on this floor has, is it. So, in other words, you, you really can't add any more shelving units or any kind of stacks, or anything like that. And, and so, all, in all these areas, we noted the lack of ADA compliance. And that was, that was another point too, is that we were taking them around all of the stacks. Although, maybe like two or three of them would be considered kind of compliant, the majority of them are not. And then the other thing we, we came across is that the mezzanine also has no egress. If the elevator is not working and there's a fire and they shut down the elevator, the only way to get down is stairs. So, if you have someone upstairs who is disabled, the only way to go down, and it's either the regular staircase, or it's the metal fire escape outside. So, that's another problem as well. And, and that basically was it. And then I, when, and then when we were outside again, before we went over to 139 Main Street, we talked about the parking spaces, the 39 parking spaces, and how, you know, fortunately, again, it was, it was a, a busy summer day, and so the parking spaces were all taken, and then I said, "And, you know, there's not even a program going on right now." So, with a program going on, you know, that would, that would also take up more space. So, we did that. And then when we went to 139 Main Street, Ron kind of took over that section, pointing out certain things to them, like the elevation is different in all areas around there, and so that, from a building perspective, is a challenge. It's, you know, anything's possible when you wanna build, but it, it would be a challenge. And of course, it was, it was hard to really see the area as it could be, because that's when all that work was going on down there, you know. We, we were all parked, for those of us who were going over to Town Hall, we were all parked at 139 Main Street, because Town Hall, this parking lot was completely, it was just completely dirt, so. So, and, and then, you know, in our final wrap-up, I mean, they were, they seemed very pleased with what we said and, and the tour, and we asked if there were any questions, and they said they got what they needed, and so that was it. So, I, I thought it went very well.
Great.
Thanks, Tavi. One of the questions that came up, obviously, right afterwards is, you know, "What's next?" And Tavi sent a message to Andrea, thanking her, and inquiring as to, "Is there, is there anything else we can do at this point? Is there anything else coming up?" We didn't get any, any clear response.
No.
At this point, you know, it's in their court, and when we hear, we'll hear.
I have a question. Tavi, did they cross off 139 Main Street?
No, and, and we were very careful, and Ron.
No, we had to be careful.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if they were like, "Oh, yeah, this made no sense," 'cause that would just.
No, I think they're, they're, you know, they.
They probably didn't do that.
Yeah, I, I think they were, they were just taking in a lot of the information. I mean, honestly, I felt like, you know, I was doing all the talking, because basically, that's what they wanted, they wanted a tour, you know. You, you, it's kind of, in fact, when we started, they said, you know, "You, you lead, you take us on, you show us what you want." And the only questions they asked, and a lot of them did come from the construction professional, where, which is why it was good that Ron was there, different questions about how certain things were constructed, you know, what's under this ceiling tile, that kind of thing. What's the material and so forth, which of course, you know, only Ron could have answered.
Well, it was great that we had that preparation meeting beforehand, so we got to focus on the criteria of the grant. I think that was really important. And I also think, in talking with Ron afterwards, he felt as well that things went very well.
Ron was very pleased.
He was glad he was able to communicate with the construction professional and go through some of the details.
And something he said to me afterward was that he felt that we could make a good showing of the fact that we take care of the buildings as much as we can, and that, that that shows. And in fact, I guess when they were, you were in the crane room, he observed that the carpet is, has issues, and he said, without, I know I'm on the air, but that he thought he could find some money to replace the carpet and things like that.
Yeah, well, we've already had work done on the carpet, and just briefly, what happens is, in the humid weather, the carpet buckles. And so, there are these big lumps in the carpet, to the point where we've purchased three dehumidifiers. We use one out by the reading room, which also has a little bit of buckling, but two of them are in the crane room. We, we crank down, we turn it down, we crank down the AC, the air conditioning, and we keep the doors closed, and we put a sign on there, you know, "Please come in and enjoy the exhibit," but we're keeping the doors closed for the air conditioning. And that does keep the carpet down. Otherwise, literally, there are bumps, high bumps all over the floor, and they're tripping hazards.
Tripping hazards.
And Seth Pearson has already been there, he's already cut the carpet in spots and tried to, you know, flatten it out and do that. But I think it's, it's, the only solution now is basically a new carpet.
Yeah. How many years old is that carpet?
Well, I think.
How long is it?
Yeah, that's the original.
Oh, is it? I thought maybe it was a decade old.
Yeah, I thought so too.
I guess the carpet, the carpet in the entrance was done.
Yeah, that's, oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's new.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, but can I ask you a question?
Um, I don't, you know, it all depends on, on, you know, the, the resources and all. I'm talking about also the, the resources of the staff, to the DPW staff to do it, to, to, to organize and stuff. I mean, they're obviously gonna get an outside company to come in.
Yep.
I mean, we have, we have a few different areas. If you notice, the stairs going up to the mezzanine, they're getting, not a tripping hazard, but I mean, they're, they're getting very used-looking and stuffed with little tears in them and so forth. But no, one of the things they mentioned numerous times, and, and mentioned before we started the tour, is that how well you maintain your building is very important, because from the standpoint of they don't want to see a building that has not been cared for, and that has been left, you know, to disrepair. So, and they did notice that, I mean, there was, we, we have one window in the trustees' room that's, the seal has gone on it, so it's getting a little fog. That's it. We, we had a broken window, that has been repaired. The outside, we've, we've, our custodian cleans it, and he keeps the landscaping around it trimmed, so, I mean, it's, they were impressed with the upkeep of the building, which, which counts in our favor.
Great. Fingers crossed as we move ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, Tavi, moving on to the, your report.
So, the only, let's see, I just wanna mention one thing about it, is that, just a little update on the library sign. So, I was in contact with Joe, Joe Reese, and he said, "The project has been initiated, and he's gonna do what he needs to do to figure out what has to be done within the next two weeks. And so, probably in another week from now, he's gonna contact me with the date when he's gonna do the work." So, we're probably looking at late September, something like that, maybe early October. But I'll, I'll have a date in a week or two.
Okay, then moving on to the new library building update, there's a couple of things I wanted to bring up. They're mostly along the lines of, what are we gonna do now that we're sort of in a holding pattern to keep ourselves busy in the next few months and to also continue to raise awareness and interact with the community. I've got a few things to mention, and I also wanted to open it up and see if trustees wanna talk about some stuff that they might be interested in, in leading. I'm slated to go possibly talk to the Orleans School Committee this month about the project. I've done two, one presentation and then one update in the past, and I'll also communicate with the Orleans Elementary School Parent/Teacher Committee. I'm also in conversation with Constance from the FICOM over updates to the capital improvement plan. I'm also in conversation with Constance from the FICOM over updates to the capital improvement plan to make sure that we're making the appropriate updates so that we're using the right numbers. I don't have a lot to report on that, so I've gotta make some progress on it. And this week, we're gonna bring the new banners that were purchased over to the library so we can put them in one or two spots so they can be viewed by everybody on a regular basis. But Joan had a couple of ideas that she talked about. And if there's anything else that anybody wants to bring up in terms of, you know, what they think might be a good effort to continue to engage with the public, this is a good time to bring things up and we can also have conversations before or afterwards.
I could go if you want.
Sure.
Okay. Martha Sherrill from Exedy Nine called me and said they want to do a piece on the library and where it stands. I asked her to wait till after we find out if we get the grant or not because otherwise, we don't really stand anywhere new. So as soon as we get something, they would be willing to do a update on what it looks like, you know, what the process is, the whole thing. Or if we don't get the grants, they're willing to do an update, but then we should have a conversation because that's gonna be, you know, we need to get the town's approval that we're gonna go ahead without, you know, without the grant.
Sure.
So that's what's going on there. I did want to find out how did the book sale, having people, the book sale? I was only there once this summer. I thought it was good, but what do you think about people?
Well, we've had, Mark was there last week and Sue, I think you've, you've been there before for a little while, right?
I went there earlier in June.
It seems like every book sale, we've had a few people asking, you know, Mary Nador has been, you know, if people, you know, she's, she's been kind of speaking to a lot of people because she's up at the cashier's table. So she's kind of taken it upon herself to talk to people about why we want the new library and what the problems are about the old library.
Right.
And, you know, people seem very interested.
It sounds like a study committee.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah.
Jerry, so I think our next op, big opportunity will be this outermost event at the Village Green. And I did find out today that there's gonna be at least two musical acts. Sarah Swing, which is about as good as you can get from town, and the other one.
We've got a separate, just for that.
Oh, sorry, sorry. But I think part of it is Jerry was gonna work on some new communicate, he was gonna fix those two documents. I don't know if he did yet.
Okay.
I haven't seen anything.
You haven't seen anything?
No, but you just have to keep on, because he's got a lot of things going on.
And Mark indicated that he might, maybe not when he's overseas, but maybe afterwards, have a little bit of time to read and do some edits to the Q and A.
Yeah, I didn't know, do you want them before I go?
No, I don't think, I don't think, you should pack and get ready to go.
When are you leaving? Tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't, I want edits in the middle of the line.
When I saw that in my inbox, I was just like.
You're like, Jamie, I didn't know you were going away, I'm sorry.
Do them while you wait there, Pomer, come on.
Yeah, Gary's like.
This is me sitting around in the airport. Tracy, are there certain book sales that, like, the, maybe the Columbus Day weekend book sale?
We don't have a special Columbus Day book sale, no, because it's kind of tough to get volunteers because a lot of people are using Columbus Day to go do or have family or whatever. So the next all-day book sale we have will be sometime in November before Christmas. Bless you, early.
Oh, so you won't have one every weekend?
We have a book sale every weekend. We do have a book sale every weekend. And the fall is when you're gonna have your second homeowner people around. So I would say in September and October, it's good to talk it up, but after that, it's gonna slow down.
But after that, you'll have the regular people that live here.
Right.
That will be the ones that will be voting on things for us.
Right, right.
So.
But again, it's, it's kind of limited because it's our regulars by that point. You know, we don't, we don't get a lot of, you know, it's not like people in town all of a sudden decide, yeah, I've never been to the book sale. You know, we pretty much see the same faces during the winter months.
All right.
One of the things that has been talked about in the past that I was interested in getting some of your feedback on is what about the idea of us having a tour that trustees would potentially give of the library? Like periodically, a tour, you know, what's terrible or the, you know, we could come up with a theme so that, you know, we would offer it, say, once a month to show people. You know, there's nothing like seeing stuff. If that's something that we're interested in doing, maybe somebody could put that together and come up with what are the 15 things on the tour that you want to hit?
I think that's a good idea. Like when we took Zinke through, he was really happy to be invited. And he was like, wow, I never noticed this, I didn't know this. And he wasn't a library goer, so maybe we can even invite some people that we think would be good supporters, people that get up and speak at town meeting and, you know, haven't really been to the library. I think it's a good thing to do.
And then maybe we can somehow film it and have it put up on YouTube so it's something that's available through our website.
I would leave some tours, I'd be fine. Tavi did some, some people asked for some tours during the.
Yeah, I mean, I would think we all could each get a tour too.
So all, all we need is somebody to come up with the general structure of it and then we can discuss a calendar.
I can work on that if you like to.
Okay, great.
And if we had a general structure that, that could be like passed around so we all do the same thing, that'd be great. And it'd be easy for us just to look at and say, okay, we're going here next.
What would be the timeframe you were thinking of that?
I think that if you could draft something up this month and we could. Is that a sigh? Is that not the magical answer? You're only gonna have one, okay.
I don't think, I think I could draft it up. It's not a big thing because even when the librarian said, some people had questions, I'd offered to take them when I was there, just around to show them. I just showed them a couple of quick things and they were like, oh, like we went downstairs. Like, oh yeah, there's no fire sprinklers, they didn't even realize it.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't think it's that much. I mean, we could just take what Tavi gave us.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I can just make a bulleted list of what to hit from the lower level all the way to the top.
We'll have to find somebody who's good at video work to, to try and do a video version of it. I think that would be really helpful. I know a couple of people.
At least just.
I know people.
At least photos are good too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I also like if the, if the library, the people that work the desk know that someone is interested, we should just get their name and one of us could email them and be like, okay.
Have it be a one-on-one, yeah?
Yeah.
Sure.
I like the video idea though, because then if people are on the website and they're like, well, what's wrong with the library really?
They can click on it, yeah.
And they look at that YouTube video, which most people would want to do, right?
And all the major municipal projects always, you know, like when they were doing the police department, I remember they had a video of it that was very detailed.
Or the one at town meeting about Rock Harbor.
Yeah, once he started that, everybody was, you know, watching.
I do think if we have a video and we have someone professional do it, they would know like, in the basement, it'd be good to have someone that's somewhat tall standing in the basement and raising their hand, being like, here, you know, this is, because.
Like Steve Gass maybe.
Yeah, someone that, because what they're saying is, you know, you would die basically, Steve, because you would hit the fire stuff.
And trying to put a book out of the bottom shelf, which I was trying to do the other day. That's not so easy either.
I can't reach the top shelf.
I have been thinking about the photographs too, Joan, along the lines of several months ago now, we had brought up the idea of having the signage in the library, like. Look here, there's the.
We should do that.
Where the water sprinklers go, or something like that. And I was just like, well, having it with somebody in it, like to Pam's point, I'm down on my hands and knees looking at this bottom shelf and I can't see it and the light's terrible. Or yes, standing up and this is the ceiling height and it would have to drop 20 inches or something.
I mean, if you wanted, Jimmy, I could, if.
I bet you work with Tavi and come up with just a basic outline and.
Okay, because Cheryl, you're leaving in a week?
I'm leaving tomorrow. And coming back and then I'm leaving again at the end of the month.
Okay, maybe Tavi and I could just pull it together.
Joan, I can, I can get you an outline that I have, just send it to you by next week.
Send it to me and then we could say, here's the photos we would want. And then, you know, pull it together and have some little signage done.
I'll be back next Thursday.
Okay.
But I also think people available, trustees available to give groups tours are good too.
Yes, definitely.
Something I guess you could post out on our website or even on the door as you enter the library, you know, would you like a tour? And sign up the desk.
Well, we're gonna talk about if the library should be open or not.
Yeah.
It's questionable. Because of the timing.
Okay, great. So that sounds like a great project.
Another thought I had, and I talked to Tavi about it last month, a little after the meeting, was the idea of just writing a letter to local organizations like, I don't know, any organization that's local, like the church groups and things like that, and saying that the library would like to come out and give them a talk about books for Christmas. And when you do that, you have a card with answers to their questions about the library building project. I did that in Brewster, it was very effective. It's, it's just a way to talk to people about the library to begin with because you're talking about books and that they might be interested in. And then people always want, once they got you there, they ask you questions about the building project and what's going on with it. It's just a real community outreach grassroots kind of level thing where you're talking to the people who are very likely to be the ones who show up at town meeting.
Can you just curate the list, Cheryl? Like bookstore holidays, like what's best to give this year?
We work with the staff on something like that, yeah. And I had suggested that the staff do it, but Tavi said he thought it was better coming from the trustees, so we can keep talking about that. I have no objection to doing it.
I mean, the list, as far as the list goes, I mean, the list, I mean, I, I can put together the list. But like getting staff, you know, having staff available to go to these different things, that's the problem. I mean.
No, you can't because it's ours.
When, when, of course, I mean, this is a different thing, but like what, what Mary and I did, I mean, I was the assistant director, then Mary's the director. We used to do the holiday book talk and, you know, one time, of course, it was different. We, we weren't doing the building at the time, but I mean, we would go to like, you know, the terraces or we would go to, we didn't, and we actually did go to one of the churches one time and. But it was literally just a, a holiday book talk, but.
I, I mean, I think it's a good, I think, I think people have to walk out of the building to talk to the people who don't come to the library regularly. And I think that's one good way to do it.
Yeah. Is that something you might be interested in working on?
Sure, I can work on it.
And I also think that, you know, some of the organizations that we might think about, we could go to and others, we might just want to send a mail into. That might not, you know, it might be better for us to reach out to them in different ways. So when, when you've had the time to develop a list, let's talk about that.
Well, you'll know if we get the grant or not before you have these.
That's right, we would know the grant before then.
I still think some of these, I don't know how active condo associations are, like along.
Old Colony.
Oh, well, either Old Colony or.
Lucas Road.
The, well, no.
Council on Aging would be another place.
There's two different condo complexes.
Rock Harbor, Rock Harbor Village?
Yeah, well, not Rock Harbor Village, but.
Yeah, West Village.
Can I think of the street that goes to Skake, goes to Skake Road? Rest Road. There, I mean, I don't know people, how often they go to meetings, but if, you know, we could go there and talk about something. But there, I'm sure a lot of those people don't come to the library, but they also might not be happy with their taxes going up again, you know, for building the library. So I, I don't know what we could do to help convince them of the need.
A lot of people in those condos are people who live year, year-round.
I know.
I have to say, Brian took parents at children's story hour. And people at the Council on Aging and exercise classes and they all live in those condos.
Right, they're here year-round and they would vote.
Right.
And, but, you know, we want them on our side. I don't know how to do that. But that's another way.
Yes, it's a good idea.
If they go to condo meetings.
Yes, they have them, yeah.
If they have them, it's a way to talk to them.
Well, maybe, the other idea is, you know, there are the First Fridays, which is the first, this Friday is another First Friday in town, and I know the library's not open, but maybe during November, December, we do a special First Friday event.
Oh, that's a good idea.
And maybe we, we till December, so we'll know.
That's true.
If we have the grant or not, but.
Tours in Rock Harbor.
I don't know how that would work with Tavi, since the library's closed and it would have to be open and, you know, it's something we can work on. But it does get a lot of people, the First Friday events.
There is one in October too.
What if we just tabled, even if the library was closed, what if we just tabled, kind of like we did for the event that we just had?
The Block Party?
The Block Party. What if we just did that? Are people walking by enough? I know there's galleries right there. There's, there's Alias Gallery right, right there. I'm just wondering if that's like a lot of traffic.
There's the bookstore.
The bookstore is open.
Right, Alias is probably, does Friends do anything?
I don't know, Friends does.
On First Friday?
They might have music.
But it's something we should capitalize on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can move our table to any location too. Not rely on the location of library.
Right, we could just be right in.
Go right in front of the bookstore.
They might not be happy with that.
Lindsay said so.
Don't buy books, come to the library.
Okay, that's a lot of great ideas and thank you to people for stepping up. Switching on to Snow Library Events, I sent out the recap on the Block Party and Kim wrote about it a little bit in her summary too. It was a great event and thank you to everybody who came out to volunteer. A lot of people and the props that we put out were definitely very, lots of curious faces and conversations going on on the side with parents. So that was really helpful. It's definitely a mixed bag in between year-rounders and summer families, but it doesn't matter because, you know, users are users. And one of the quotes that I included was a woman who said, you know, we've been visiting the library over and over and over again this summer.
Right.
You know, you're such a wonderful institution and thank you so much. So it was really great to hear that. Joan, there's a handout that's separate from your package, which is an email that Joan wrote up and I'll turn it over to you to talk.
Okay, I just wanted to bring something else. I was with a friend, I saw him in the library, he lives in Eastham. And I was like, wow, you come here? He said, you know what he said? I come here because of the people. And he said, we have the best staff and even if the building's not as great, we have the best staff of any library he's ever been to. And I do think there's something we should do, although we're talking about the building, but highlighting the people that work at the library, because a lot of people don't know who works there. We have new people that work here and I think we should give them all the credit because they're the ones that are gonna help us sell this in the most. And I don't know what that is, but when we're doing this sort of, you know, these little pieces of like the sprinkler's broken, this is broken, we should do the positives about the staff and have some people highlighted and, you know, Jenny, what's your favorite Jenny story? I mean, there's someone that'll, you know, so I think it's a positive story about the people that is gonna help us get the money as much as how bad the building is.
Just not all Tim McGlum, I agree with you, yeah. That's really good.
All right, so this, we're calling it the Outermost Event at Village Green, I've, that's a real name. So Mike Salito, who was the Assistant Town Planner, but now has a new job at the town and he is in charge of special projects and I think anything that no one else is doing. But he seems very happy about it because you're reporting into Kim. So this came up because there is a music festival happening down at North Ship Beach on October 12th and 13th. They think it could sell out because there's rumors of some bigger names coming, but it's $400 for the two days and you have to buy two-day tickets. And you have to pay to park $30 car. So, but they do get a lot of people in and with that, the town thought they should capitalize on it and have something on the Friday night before. So Clark, who owns Trove Gallery, is really the one leading this. He is on the, it's not Cultural Economic Development Council with Judy Lindahl, who's also part of it. And Mike first emailed me and said, you know, we want to talk about this. And he did talk about, Kim thought, Kim Newman thought it'd be a good place to start raising money, which we're not gonna start raising money yet. But it is a good place for us to start getting messaging about the library out there. So part of it is, they got the approval to set up on the Village Green, which is huge because nothing really happens on the green in terms of, there will be two food trucks, two or three food trucks on the green. There's gonna be like 20 to 30 tents set up for vendors and nonprofits. On the green, there'll be a beer truck, a wine truck, and they expect it to just be one big party right there And they expect it to just be one big party right there from the library. With that comes some issues for the library because they're going to start setting it up on Tuesday before. We're going to have to hold a couple of spaces for them to bring their equipment in and things like that. It will be rain or shine, so if it's pouring out, people will still be outside. The parking lot will be closed the day of the event, starting at 12 noon, because that's where they're going to really start having vendors be able to come in. It will be open to handicap access, though. And they will have a police officer stationed there. Originally, that was not in the plan, but considering I've seen the book sale, people almost get killed running across, they will have someone stationed there. So the thought was, and obviously Tavi has to jump in. The event starts at 3:30. They want it to be after school is out because that's really critical because kids could then come down with families. But should the library be open or not from 3:30 to 5? It might be better if it's closed. Otherwise, we do think you'll get lots of people coming in to use the bathroom and all that. And it might be better, they will have porta potties set up, a handicap and regular, to just have the library closed early that day because the focus is going to be on this event. We will have a table. What we do at that table, I don't know whether or not it could be a book sale on that table or, you know, an activity again. We should definitely have better signage and educational stuff about what we're doing for the building, make it fun. But we will have a table there and we can have our choice of where we want our tent. So once we see what the real structure is, we can make sure we're in a good visible location. And supposedly, the Chamber of Commerce is providing the tents for each table. And we would just need our table and chairs. So that's the event. I think it's great for us. I think it's right there. We could do a little, you know, having the photos ready for that mark would be really important. Like the photos of what's wrong with the library, make it really visual and things like that.
Yeah, I was even thinking, I guess it would be too hard to do, to have the video ready, that you could have a little computer and be showing the video of a tour and what, what's wrong.
Right. We're four weeks out, so.
You're to have that done, then?
No, without.
I could do photos on my phone, my new phone, once it comes. And then, but, you know, if we had someone else that thinks, take better photos, that would be better. But I think we should make it really impactful. And, you know, I only thought book sales, you have some really good books to sell that, but it's hauling them out there and hauling them back.
And having really good books to sell.
And having really good books to sell.
Tavi, do you want to respond to the closure question? So the parking lot's not going to be accessible after?
12 noon.
I mean, we're normally open till 5.
Staff are usually expecting to be there and scheduled till 5. You know, we certainly could accommodate any kind of walk-in traffic or.
I think the staff should be open.
Anything like that.
Okay.
I mean, we're happy to be there and be open, I mean, till, till 5.
Or else, maybe the, if, if you're paying the staff, maybe they could help outside at our table.
I think the library should be open. I really think the image we don't want to present to the town is, there's a big event at the town square, so we closed the library.
The only reason.
Without a sell a library is a public.
The only thought there was because of the crowds and people coming in to use the bathrooms and stuff. I mean, we're not, they're expecting big crowds and so.
And the stage is going to be in the lot.
In the lot.
It's not going to be down below.
Right, so the stage is going to take up the whole parking lot.
In the lot, yes.
And that's their big ask is, can we use your lot?
The lot's going to be closed from 12 o'clock. Go on.
The stage is in the lot?
Yeah.
They're not using the stage they already have in the town square?
No, because it's not big enough.
It's not big enough.
So the only thing I just want to mention is I can foresee because there was an event last week and everybody was parked in the library, parking lot and stuff. And so if people expect to come and they can't park and stuff like that, I mean, we may get calls like.
Yep, that's, that's one of the questions.
I think we're going to have to have some signage up before the event to say the parking lot will be closed as of 12 noon on Friday. We had told Michael he needs to tell the parents beforehand because normally they pick their kids up there. Something needs to go into the parents to say the parking lot's going to be closed. And maybe it's even going to be closed for the whole day. I mean, because I would think they would be smarter to close it not 12 when they're going to pull the truck in, but like give it some time.
Well, because there's going to be people there at the library.
Yeah, it's hard to clea-, it's hard to clear out a lot.
Once it's there.
In fact, one year for the block, the police block party, they thought they were going to do that. And what they had to end up doing is just closing it off. And like the people who were in the lot already could leave, but no one else could come in. So it does become a problem.
Do you think they should just close it the whole day?
Yeah.
Yes.
Probably.
Okay, let's do that. I think that's safer.
Are we going to have it open for handicap parking?
Yeah, the ones, yes, the handicap, we'll have to ask Mike, is there going to have a cop there to let the handicap parking people in?
Yeah, the town has a portable sign that they can put there in the spots that are right next to the existing pathway that they built.
Right.
To create one or two spots.
And I still think the little library should be, the building should be open and stuff like that. Because you are going to get people coming in. And, you know, again, that, you know, this, this event's at the library. And so to have the library closed, because a lot of times when people are going to different events, they say, oh, while I'm here, let me stop in the library.
Well, we could give tours from 3:30 to 5. I mean, that's the other thing we could do.
And I'm happy to do one of those.
People from other towns come to these things.
I think you're going to a lot of people from other towns because the music is free. And they're two good bands, maybe more than just two bands. And supposedly, lots of good craft vendors and food vendors, so. But we just have to decide what you're going to do at the table.
Is there, I, I'm like, I probably think different than anybody else. But last time I talked about buttons. I don't want buttons. But are there like stickers or labels, anything, something that has a nice saying about libraries or books? That could be there to hand out to people? Just a small sticker or, you know, a bumper sticker or something that somebody could even put on their computer if they want, I mean.
Well, we'd want to, if it's something, we'd have to order them. I mean, we'd want to do that.
But we have time now.
We have time now, Sue, right.
So, I mean, is, do you recall anything? Are there catalogs of that kind of things?
I guess, I mean, there's great things that they, that they have at the bookstore. So I can ask Kaz at the bookstore. She has ones that are like very cute, that kids would like and that people would like to put on. People put them on their water bottles now. That's often where people put stickers, like vinyl stickers like that.
They have, you know, the, there are library vendors because we have conferences and they make a lot of money from libraries that have catalogs of things like that, of stickers and.
There might be something for kids, but a lot of people are going to be adults.
There's a company called Sticker Mule, and you go on and you just put the five things you want. And then you, they tell you what it is and how long it takes. It's called Sticker Mule.
It just depends what kind of stickers you're talking about. Because there's like two different kinds of stickers, right? There's like paper stickers that are just a one-time thing. And then there's like a vinyl sticker, which people put on something and it stays for a long time.
That would probably be too expensive, maybe.
Well, maybe we should just look at all options and, because I don't know what too expensive is. I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, but I do think we need to do something.
Bring us some price moves.
Mark, what were you thinking?
I think that's interesting. My one hobby horse ask is not to use the ship, but Snow Library is great.
Don't use the ship.
I don't even know if we need to have Snow Library on it, just something about libraries and books.
Yeah. But I was going back to the earlier discussion about the library being open. My big concern would be, does the custodian come on Saturday? Because there could, it could be a mess that day.
They told us they're going to clean up the property. They, we asked that question. They said they are responsible for cleaning up the property, whoever's putting the sign.
Right, but he's also asking about inside, like the bathroom. Say it's raining, the bathroom is going to be a disaster.
We have, we have someone actually who comes here from the town just on Friday nights to clean the library. And if, you know, he can't do it, our custodian could do it.
Okay.
So, but the event's going on beyond 5, right?
Around 7:30.
Yeah.
5 till 7, no, but we would still close at 5.
Right.
So by 5, people are, probably haven't been drinking that much. I would think the bathroom would be more popular at like 6:30 or 7:00.
I think it's going to matter when the bands start and what band's on first, because that can cause a crowd. And Darcy had a good idea. We should look at some fun bookmarks. Not, not ship ones, but we should definitely look at bookmarks since those are affordable and people use them and we could have some fun different.
You had one that said, if you have a garden in a book, you've got everything that you need.
Right, and had a seed thing on it.
That would be just a wonderful one. I use it all the time.
Can you show your husband that?
You'd share that with your husband?
No.
The New York Public Library has a bookbag with that, huh? It's a Cicero quote.
Right, it's a, it's a well-known quote, and I think we pulled it off.
But it's a smaller one, too. It's not this great big one, the, the paper ones, you know, that are at the library. It's only about that big. It's perfect.
Those should be pretty affordable to make up, I would imagine.
So just let me know, you know, what you want, whether you want stickers or bookmark and then what you want, you know, some possible ideas on those.
Should a couple of us meet at the library and look at the catalogs, like within the next couple of days?
Yeah, I can work on it, too, because, because Jamie's not going to be there this day. I'll be there.
I'll be out of time.
Who else is around?
I don't think I'm going to be here that.
Oh, that day? Oh, I'll be there.
Okay.
I'll be there that day.
That day, okay.
I should be there.
Okay, so maybe we can, I'll just send out a note. We can get together and think of ideas. And I wasn't at the block party, or is it, wait, but how did that go, the event?
Oh, lots of people.
It was great. It was great. I'm glad that we moved the table more towards the middle. I think that really helped in terms of traffic. Like when it was first set up, it was way over in the woods by the bank.
Oh, my goodness.
And we wouldn't have gotten the same type of traffic. So location is everything, which is why, you know, you should get your location way soon in terms of where you're going to be with the library table out on the green.
Well, I want to see the setup and where the band is and how people, you know, if it's too loud, we have some speakers, you know, like, I just want to make sure we're not, right.
Joan, I was curious. I know what we just talked about. But has Mike weighed in about whether he thinks we should be open or not, or closed?
We said we would ask, we just wanted to make sure there was no cars in the parking lot and that we didn't want to overwhelm the library. But if we said we're going to stay open, but you should close the parking lot that morning, he would be psyched.
I just wonder, like, are there going to be a lot of wires and everything behind the stage? Can people get safely around that in the delivery?
They said that the, there's electricity in the Village Green.
Oh, it's terrible.
It's not enough amperage. It's not enough amperage.
Yeah, that's why.
They're going to want to get power from the library somewhere.
He said no on our phone call, but we could check again.
You think they're going to be running generators for that?
Good. There is a lot of electricity, though, around, around the plantings, some of those plantings and everything. Where the.
For Christmas lights, yeah.
Yeah, where the Christmas lights go.
But it goes out all the time.
I would imagine they would know what to do electricity-wise. But you know, if you put too much
They may bring electricity.
Power, you know, it could end up blowing. I mean, we've actually had fuses that were blown from overpower use.
All right, let me, I'll send Mike a note and just make sure he goes over there with Ron and they can understand it. And I'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Trove, to him, to Clark, to see what he thinks they were doing music-wise. Because they do have amps and stuff. You're absolutely correct. And normally, when he does shows in the parking lot, those wires are run like.
It's a lot of power.
To his store, right.
Yep.
Mike, it's not a library thing, but how are they getting the food trucks on the green?
From 28.
Yeah, they literally made some modifications so they can hobble the curb. And they're going to come down into that knoll. I don't know where that is.
Ah, we, we are, I go there.
Not our job.
It's not our job.
Not our, yeah, we asked, he said they're going to take off one of the signs from the street to get the trucks on, and then the sign will go back. We asked the same question.
Those old, those old food trucks.
We're for it.
Don't worry about it. Not your problem.
Yeah, all right, so.
Right, so who wants to help with this event? Creative and things like that. Sue?
I'll, I'll help you with anything you want.
Lindsay.
Lindsay. Mister Bike Across America?
Mister Bike Across America.
When you're back, okay. Tracy, you think you want to be here since we're going to use some of the money from? I don't know, the new library.
Sure.
All right.
If I'm here, I'll, I'll be there.
Okay. So bookmarks, do you think we need an activity? I'll, I'll ask Jerry where my poster is.
Yep.
That he was making.
Okay.
Yeah, he just, you just need to remind him.
Okay.
He's got good intentions always.
Use one of the banners attached to the table.
All right, we have the banners.
Just don't tape it onto the table.
Was that a problem? It came off.
If you tape it onto the front, the paint will come off. It will just pew right off on the vinyl. So you can tape it on the underside.
And I have to find out from Mark, from them, if we have tables and then the chairs.
Yep. Thanks, Joan.
All right. I think it's great, the little highlights, yeah.
Okay, switching gears to Pam.
Yeah.
And the Archives project update.
Okay, I'm going to see Betty Ceracei tomorrow because she offered some help having done some work with archives somewhere. She mentioned it, so I said, okay, yes, I would like that. I don't really, it's not helpful to have somebody come in and look at the stuff as what needs to stay and what needs to not stay. That is not something that is easy to do with, with more than one person. But for this kind, I don't know how to organize it the way. And I want to be able to have, have signs up there, like this is what this is, this is what this is. I want the index to work. So anyway, I found one of the indexes and I found the photograph album, this deck, that works with it. Personally, that was my first, I know. I couldn't figure out because one was the red bound with this group of things and then the other thing was somewhere else and it was. So those are on the table right now, and that's going to stay there. I think what I'm going to do is look at Gaylord and get some of the, I don't know what you call them, the boxes that you can put things in for the archives for these old photograph albums that they have. I think it's much better, because all these things in these flat boxes and they're one right on top of the other, so you really can't get at them. So we need to have some way where we can put these things in boxes where they can stand up. And then you can have the label and it, people can walk in and, oh, that's where this is. We also have a huge Britannica Encyclopedia. Britannica, is that what it is? No, what is it?
It's the.
It's not.
It's the 11th.
The 11th edition.
11th edition, which is a very famous edition.
And we either have to, I don't know what to do with it, but we need to get it out of there because it, I, I think that there could be people who collect these things.
It's all coming, it's all coming apart. I mean, the binding is leather and it's all just disintegrating.
It's very, it's fun to look at it, but you know, it's not something that we really, I, I think that we shouldn't have. But I don't know how to go about finding people who would like to, to collect that kind of thing.
Do you have some of the friends who takes rare books someplace in Boston?
Yeah, well, I, I don't know about encyclopedias. She checks, you know, that's Lauren, and she's been checking on Amazon and eBay and things like that. And she did meet with somebody at the Brattle Bookstore, I think, up in Boston. But I don't, you know, what she does is she takes photographs and sends them to him. And then he talks about.
Well, perhaps we could do that, just take a picture of one of them, say we have 20 volumes of this. Is there any way that they might, somebody might want to collect it?
Yeah, here it says it's worth $1,921.
There you go.
But that's.
Someone has to buy it.
They don't know that, yeah, and they don't know that because they haven't seen it. I mean, it's been sitting there for a long time.
I mean, some $530.
One of my problems is, of course, still having the postcards. And there is so much duplication. And there have been shows at the Marion Crane Gallery of the H.K. Cummings Project, the photographs. and things like this, you know, have been done with the, with the pictures that are there, and all these pictures are duplicated in the postcards, they're duplicated in the photograph albums, they're duplicated in everything in there. And so it, it's really kind of hard, but I think this kind of thing ought to be just sold.
Right.
I mean, you know, I, I don't, I don't see any reason, they, they, it isn't sort of an archival thing, because we have other pictures of it, so that's where I am with that.
How many different ones do you have?
I have called the, um, the Cho, the, I prefer to say Historical Society, I'm sorry. And, um, and I'm supposed to, I'm getting, should be getting a call this week. I have three things that Tavi and I both decided we don't need them, and they might take them. If they don't, I don't know what we're gonna do with them, but I will find something. We've gotten, the, the computer has stuff on it, and we're, it's really hard to decide whether what's on there is already in the, in the room or not. I mean, one of the things I found, and it was in the room and on a printed piece of paper, so it's kinda hard to know. Um, we might have to, uh, put it all onto a flash drive and keep it, but the typewriter, the Smith Corona word processor went to Staples and they're gonna redo it, re, you know, recycle it. So that's, that's out. Um, that one's done. Let's see, what was the other thing? Oh, we have pictures, okay? Some of the pictures, of course, are from these prints. I'm, I'm talking, you know, big, uh, pictures that you would hang on the wall. And, um, I have four John Murphy pictures, and I don't know whether he gave them to the library or somebody else gave them to the library, but I was thinking, um, we can't really have all these pictures, and even in a new library, if they're not particularly library-oriented, like what we have in the library now, are, are pictures like this with, of, of his collection, which is kind of a fun thing to have. But, um, my quandary now is I want to call him and ask him if we could use these pictures for a fundraising event for the new library, but I don't even know if he gave them, so I'm.
You know, Pam, I can, I can probably find that out, um, because I remember getting them, um, and I don't.
From him, do you think?
No, I don't believe so, so, so I can find out who.
No, I don't think so either. So would we still want to call him?
Not if they were given.
No, um, so I'll, I'll find out who it was who gave them to me.
Yeah, not if they're given. Okay. Okay, so we can find that out, but that might be a very nice, um, raffle kind of thing during, at the few months, you know, and just having that, that going. I don't know how to, how to create that, but I have a question.
Can I have a question? Like, is this rock cover? Do we know where these pictures are of?
Yeah, that's the Christmas tree.
Well, yeah, sure, I mean, if you go to this big index, you'll see.
It tells you what the photos are, so we should, could mark the back. I think people might be interested in these for sure.
Oh, I think, I definitely do.
Yeah, yeah.
We've been, we've been selling some of the postcards.
Especially something like this.
Well, there's a huge bunch of these in various and sundry of those long boxes.
Oh.
And they come in periodically, and, and there's some with two of them in there, and some, you know, I mean, it's just not, we have to clear it out.
Are, are those, are those, Pam, on the, on the shelving in the archival boxes?
But they're all these?
I was wondering if they were the ones that possibly were used in the exhibits that they did, like those are what went on the wall.
Oh, yeah, some of them are. They're, they're in the big boxes, and it says the exhibit Crane Room.
Yeah, so I mean, I've been thinking about, do, do any, does the middle school or does the high school do any local history teaching, or do they just teach to the tests now? And like, offer them there, and if they want them, great, if they don't, then say goodbye.
Well, sure, I mean, all those roll-up ones that I brought the last time, we still have those, and of course, all the postcards. I'm thinking about surreptitiously going into the trustee room and putting all those postcard boxes in there, that's all right.
Yeah, she's just joking.
I was just thinking about doing that, but, um, you know, so there's a lot of that kind of thing that I would really like to get rid of.
How many of those do we have like that, mounted and stuff?
Um, I would have to go through the boxes again to make sure, because it was, they were labeled the Crane Room, uh, you know, H.K. Cummings Project, and they had it out there, so I, these are just ones that I picked up so that you could see how they were done, you know, what they look like. But I, I would have to go, I'm gonna have to go through all the ones again and pull out all the ones that are like that.
Do you think there's anything we could sell at this event?
I, that's what I was thinking, too.
Yeah.
I don't know why not.
A bit too good.
And it could be, you know.
Cause like that rock cover one, because it's very cool.
Because as long as we're not doing something, sending something that we don't have a copy of, that's the only thing we have to be careful of, and I can check that. But the, that photograph with all the black negative picture, the, all the black, the pictures in black and white from the negatives, you know, that big black photograph, which are sort of not particularly great, but at least they're, I think that's all of them. So, you know, it, yeah, we're not, I wouldn't take something that I thought that was unique, but these things are just repeat, repeat, repeat. I think most of those are on the postcard, yeah. So anyway, that's, that's where I am. I'm expecting to find out from the, I can report back about the, about the Historical Society another time, and, um, we'll see what we can do with all the information that's on the computer. Yeah, some of it does have her name on it, too.
You're working hard.
Hmm?
You're doing a great job and working hard.
She said keep on going.
But I'm not, I'm, I'm not fast, so just.
That's fine.
It's slow to speak out.
How much would you think we would sell those for, if they were mounted like that? Do we care if we make money, or we just want to get them out of the people's hands?
Well.
I would have to find out, and I don't know how to find out who that is, except I have to go through the whole book.
Yeah, you'd have to go through the whole book, but, yeah, it'd be listed who that is.
But we could do it, I mean, I can.
I like the idea of offering them to the schools, especially the school libraries, so that the kids have access to them.
These.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the kids should have access to local history.
Well, other than. Let's get them all together, and then we can decide, maybe you could look at some of them and see
I'd be happy to look at some of them.
if we might put them up for, in the book sale kind of thing, and then, I mean, there are enough, but there would be some leftover for the.
When you're ready for help again.
School, let me know. When you're ready for help again.
Sure.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so, thanks so much, Pam.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Now, on to our last item. Tracy, thanks for sitting with us for this long.
I enjoy sitting with you guys. Okay, my report is gonna be kinda short. So our annual meeting of the Friends will be held on October twenty-fifth, which is a Friday, from twelve to two in the afternoon, so save the date in the Crane Room. Just like we did last year, we thought that that was well-received, and it was a nice lunch, and people actually stayed and talked after the business meeting, so we thought that was good. Um, our financial picture for July, um, gross profit in July was up two thousand one hundred and one dollars over last year due to more revenue from book sales, investment income, and higher membership donations and memorial gifts. Library contributions and operating expenses were up even more. So our net income for July was down about one thousand dollars compared to last year. So the good news is we're making money, the bad news is we're spending money. Um, the Storyteller Series, we are just about wrapped up now. We have a couple more events coming up. Um, the Tanglewood Marionettes drew the largest audience of all time this summer with about seventy people attending the performance of Sleeping Beauty. Apparently the Tanglewood Marionettes have their own fan club, and so.
They lured people in great.
Yeah, they just, there were kids who had seen the play before, you know, it was all ages, and they were just enraptured. It was wonderful, and you got to learn about the puppets, and it was a lot of fun, so if you ever get a chance to see them, if you haven't seen them, they're really good. Um, David Roth also had a big crowd, again, he has a fan club, so he performed on August twenty-first. And Katie Hendricks ended the month with an audience of about twenty adults. Um, she presented about the Wampanoags on Cape Cod. She's a, kind of an outreach educator for the Mashpee Wampanoags, and, uh, she did a really nice job, and there were, there were people who came to see her specifically, they, and they asked some really great questions. So I was thinking that might even be something to put out for Lifetime Learning.
Yep.
There's, there's all of a sudden a lot of, um, Wampanoag connection.
Sure.
Things in town going on, and so different people came up and talked to her after that. Um, so it was very interesting in audience participation. Um, Len Cabral postponed his August performance because he had COVID, but he is coming back on October fifth, which is a Saturday, at two o'clock, so if you've never seen him, he's well worth your coming to see him. And David Roth also is gonna do a songwriting workshop with third and fourth graders. I'm gonna talk to the people over at the elementary school to see if the school wants to be involved or whether we'll just do it in the library, but I thought it would be a good school library connection. So I, I waited for school to get started before I went over and talked to anybody about that.
Read out a statistic if they come through the door.
That's true. Well, we could do it at the library, but, um, we would kinda need to get some kids involved, and it might be best talked up through the school. Um, okay, Lifetime Learning registrations went public right after Labor Day weekend. As of Labor Day Sunday, we already had fifty-six individuals registered for two hundred and nineteen courses, and courses will start September thirtieth. And book sales were hot in August. The all-day sale earned one thousand twenty-two dollars, which was the biggest all-day sale of our summer, but the biggest surprise was August tenth, when we earned seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars in three hours. I don't know what happened that day, I can't remember what the weather was, but that was unbelievable. So finally, for these last couple of months, our sales are finally ahead of last year's sales, upstairs and downstairs, which is really nice. So if you have any books to donate, please bring them in, we're desperate.
I bring you some. I have something else for Friends. Do you know, um, Allison Jackson had passed away in, in obituary, all the money goes to the Friends of the Library.
Oh, I didn't, I know Allison Jackson.
It actually goes to the library.
Oh, goes to the library?
Goes to the library.
Yes, and I, I'll have a report in next month's meeting of the amounts we've received so far.
Allison was very involved in the Democratic Club here in Orleans and then a lot of other things. Um, you might have seen her around town, just, um, just rare brown, black glasses, really fun, red hair. Her and her husband, um, they live by Grandview, and she died unexpectedly pretty fast, so, um, but it also always went directly to the library.
Yes.
Hmm, good.
That's okay. Our money goes to you anyway, so.
I, well, I, I spoke, I spoke with the family, and I said, you know, either one is fine, and they wanted it, so that's, it does say that in the thing.
And, okay. We've gotten invited to something, and I thought it said Friends, so.
Well, I know my neighbor passed away, and, and they have Friends, Sylvia.
Right. Right, right, yeah. Yeah, so we've got donations for that.
She was a, she was a bookstore customer.
Oh, was she?
And she was a singer.
And a singer, yeah.
She specifically, she came in, her, her family came in to talk to the library, too, and they decided on the Friends because she was an ardent lover of Lifetime Learning, so.
Right, right. And that's it?
Great.
I do have one more thing that I forgot to tell you. I found up there a partial planning guide for the trustees of Snow Library in nineteen eighty-four, and it was really kind of fun, because they had done this whole study, some of it, um, uh, by mail, and then they did another study in eighty-five. Anyway, the, one of the things it said was that there was no difference between the visitors and the year-round people in terms of their support for the library, and, you know, we didn't have to distinguish on any of our programs, that, you know, between the, the, uh, the people who come in from outside and the, the people who live here. I thought they were, they were kind of fun to look at, and, um, I'm not, I don't know that we need to keep them, but it, it might be something that would be.
I, I think we probably should.
Interesting.
I, I had been asked.
Yeah, I hate to get rid of them.
It's a, that's a town doc.
I only have part one and part three.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, part two and part three. Non-residence was one, and then, and then, you know, they did it in all different ways. It was really quite, quite a good study about the, um, educational levels, economic levels. I mean, they, you know, they got a fifty-six percent return on their mailing, which is pretty phenomenal for a, a mailing, um, survey. So, anyway, I thought that was kind of fun. If anybody wants to look at them, I will put them up there in the, in the room and, in the bookcases, they will go in the cases, for now.
Anybody have anything else before adjourned?
I wanna just, uh, call out something that Tavi kinda skipped over in his director's report, and that's the heiress report highlights. They have to do a statistical report, um, people using the library, um, circulation and door counts and all that stuff. And our statistics are up everywhere, so I think that Tavi should take our commendation and thanks back to the staff, because these are good, these are, this is really good statistics. So I think, I think it's something that we should acknowledge as a board, and I think it's something we should be proud of. Um, the circulation increased from ninety-five thousand to one hundred and one thousand. The non-circulation increased by ten, by ten thousand. Um, the door count, you know, everything is up.
It's amazing.
The door count's up by twenty thousand, so really, these are really great statistics, and I think Tavi deserves some acknowledgement, so it's a stat.
Well, I think this is, this is really the first year, though, that we like, this summer is the first summer we've had since COVID pandemic, where it really has gotten back to normal levels. I mean, it's taken quite a while to get back to normal levels.
But, you know, just getting close to a hundred thousand people coming into the library. Now, does that essentially mean a hundred thousand, or is that fifty thousand?
No, that, that.
Like every time somebody goes by it?
Yes, and so what we do is when we get the daily number, we divide it in half.
Okay.
Because it's people going in and then going out.
It's a huge number, I mean, it's fantastic.
Should I put this under new business?
Um, no.
Put it in the director's report, really.
Yeah.
Add it to the director's.
And what's in there, it's, it's in my report.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
That's electronic one you got.
Oh, okay.
A motion to adjourn?
I. Go ahead. Who said I, sorry?
Who, who offered the motion? I just heard a moment.
I heard people.
I can.
Okay, motion from Pam.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I second.
Sue, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.